Again, welcome to the Duluth Public Schools. It is Tuesday, February 7th. It is 4:40. And it is our Committee of the Whole, and we welcome all of us here today. We are going to take role for our Board by Clerk Zadowski.
Member Edar.
President.
Member Kirby.
Here.
Member Lotfak.
There.
Member Lotfak?
Here.
Member Othol?
Here.
I am here, Member Stanhorn.
Present.
Superintendent Magus?
Here.
Assistant Superintendent Bonds?
Present.
Deputy Clerk Dunich?
Here.
HR Director Severance?
Here.
That's, um, okay, yeah.
Ask. And so, just a reminder too, at a Committee of the Whole meeting, we do not vote on anything. And so, the exchange is rather, I don't want to say casual, it's not casual. We have an agenda, we have planned presentations. Many of us have looked over all of the information before coming here and might have questions, but we've all really come ready for that. So, I usually turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Bonds, because he is an important part of our Committee of the Whole. He's the one that really does do a lot of the organizing, because he knows deadlines and state statutes and what we do need to know at certain times during the year. Things like handbooks and just certain curricula. And so, we turn to him, but he's shuffling through. I'm just panting right now, because I can tell he's looking for something.
Chello Foot, thank you for that. Good evening, everyone, and I am the Assistant Superintendent for the school district. And we're having a little technical difficulty trying to pull up the video through the normal process. I'm quickly trying to add it to my desktop, and then we will cast it. So, if you would just give me a second.
Change to school counseling, where it was developed K through...
We'll restart.
Was this in Board book?
No.
Did I miss this? I've never seen the student.
So, good evening again, everyone. So, for our first presentation, the presentation is going to actually be a... We're going to review a video that our counselors have developed, and then they're going to be present to field questions. So, I will just quickly start the video, and then we, as it, will shed light on why our counselors are here and the good work that they are engaged in, and then give us a hand after this to ask questions. So, I will start the video.
Hello, I'm Morgan Caffley.
I'm Ashley Kudrowski.
And we're two of the school counselors here at Ordean Eastville School. We're here to highlight some school counseling programming that we have here in our district.
And just a little bit of the history of school counseling.
Guidance counseling was first developed to support students in high school to help prepare them for the job force and was very focused on career readiness. In 2002, the field changed to school counseling, where it was developed K through 12 proactive programming that included academic support, social emotional support, and career exploration support.
School counseling is naturally aligned with the MTSS multi-tiered systems of support.
Mental health support that we provide is also in a tiered system. The American Schools Counseling Association recommends 250 students to one school counselor.
As you can see, the writing in red are the Esr-funded positions in the 22-23 school year.
Hi, I'm Megan Ferrell, school counselor here at Congdon Park Elementary. I'm also the only elementary school counselor in the Duluth Public School. I feel really fortunate to have this position here at Congdon. My job is busy and varied, and I wear lots of different hats here at Congdon. The main things that I get to do with my job are deliver Tier One and Tier Two interventions with our students here. So, our Tier One interventions, which all kids K through five get, I get to go into classrooms and deliver social emotional learning curriculum. I most recently did a four-week series on bullying. So, all of our students here at Congdon probably know the three Rs of bullying, to recognize what it looks like, to report it when you see it, and to know who to report to, and to refuse bullying. And so, how do we do that? How do we say no when someone is bullying us or when someone's bullying somebody else? We talked about bystanders. So, our kids should be able to identify what a bystander is and what are the things that they can do that can help stop bullying. Our next lessons in January, so the next time I visit all of our classrooms, will talk a little bit more about friendships. And what are the things that we do that attract people towards us or maybe actions that we do that repel people away from us? So, we'll talk about that in our next SEL lessons in the classrooms. I also deliver Tier Two interventions, and that looks like having small groups of kids or individual kids in my office on a weekly basis. And that looks like talking about divorce with kids. Or maybe a kid who is struggling with anger in class or at home and helping them to give, to find some tools that they can use to calm their body down when they're feeling really big feelings. I might even just help kids navigate social situations or things with their peers. Those are all different things that I get to do on a daily basis here with our students at Congdon. I know that this is an important role here at the elementary level, and I think it's really critical that we put elementary school counselors in all of our buildings and support more middle school counselors and more high school counselors, because it is an important role to just help support our students' mental well-being.
They can help you when you're like angry, sad, at that exact time, and tell you what to do to calm down, like to fit it together. But they can also help you if things around you are happening, like getting bullied or other things. They can help you figure out that situation and what to do.
Here are our three school counselors at Ordean Eastville School. Myself, Ms. Caffley, Ms. Kudrowski, and Ms. Segal.
Your husband, the first year that Ordean Eastville School has had three full-time school counselors, which meant that we had a school counselor for each grade level.
It was really amazing, because with the three of us, we were able to implement our multi-tiered systems of support and the school counseling world. So, we wanted to give you a highlight from August to January, what we were able to do per grade level. We were able to provide Tier One interventions, which looked like classroom guidance lessons of approximately 50 topics, or 50, that included topics like bullying prevention, inclusion, conflict resolution, career exploration, and we were able to do two-minute counselor meetings with all of our sixth-grade students. We were also able to identify and refer checking connect students, guide our checking connect mentors in supporting the academic development of their students they're working with, and we serve on school-wide proactive teams like MTSS, SIS team.
And this year, because we've been able to spend so much time on the Tier One level, we've really gotten to know our students per grade level and are hopefully able to provide intervention before we get to the Tier Two and Tier Three level. But we also have Tier Two. So, Tier Two looked like individual counseling provided to over 70 students per grade level regarding academics, personal, and social concerns. We provided and coordinated behavioral, academic, and mental health interventions. We provided small group opportunities.
And our last year that we were able to help provide our students is Tier Three, and this is where case consultation, crisis counseling, suicidal ideation assessment, and wraparound care with community agencies come into play.
I'm Jodi Timmerman, and I teach Level Studies here at Ordean Eastville School. Middle school is a time where we know students experience many changes. As a classroom teacher, I have noticed an impact of having three counselors this year here at Ordean. One counselor per grade level should be a minimum to maintain the current level of support that we are experiencing. Mental health applies to everyone, and this is the time that we can really set up students at the toolbox for success of coping skills. Please support our counselors in our middle school.
We would love to keep our three school counselors to support all of our students here at Ordean Eastville School.
But we have another idea. We would love to have a fourth school counselor at Ordean, and we already have mapped a plan for that person.
Hi, we're the three counselors at Lincoln Park Middle School.
I'm Kim Fly, I'm the sixth-grade counselor.
Tori Rat, seventh-grade school counselor.
And I'm Nicole Steiner, and I'm the eighth-grade school counselor.
Well, first I'd like to say that we've been so fortunate here at Lincoln, because for the past six years, we have had three of us counselors at Lincoln, and we move with our students. So, this year, as a sixth-grade counselor, I'm up on the third floor with my sixth graders. Next year, when we go to seventh grade, my office moves, Nicole's office moves, and so does Tori's office move, and we move with our students every single year, so we can be with them. We get to know our students amazingly well, because we are not only on the same floor with them every single year, but we have them for three years in a row. And by the time they go to high school, we know the students and we know the families extremely well.
Yeah, and it's really helpful, because when they start a new school year, we were able to place them in classes that we feel are appropriate. We know what students to put them in class or maybe avoid being in class with. We're able to give teachers pointers on what works best for a student and just really, you know, build that relationship, so we know them and we know what they need.
And I think for families, it's really helpful. We have historical context then for our students. We, you know, our first starting to get to know them at the end of fifth grade, when we meet with the grade teachers, and then we get to follow them all the way till we hand them off to them home and are able to share that perspective and the longevity of their middle school career and even before that.
Yeah, so we've been very thankful and are glad that we have the modeling.
Hi, my name's Lisa Monworth. I'm a school counselor working at Lincoln Park Middle School. I run the PALS program, which is an alternative to suspension program. My skills and background as a school counselor has set me up really well to function in this room and build this program overall.
Hey, I'm Jane Dinger, and I work at Lincoln Park Middle School. And I love that our school has a counselor for each grade. One of the big parts of our school building relationships with our students, and our counselors do a phenomenal job of that. We actually have some, like, student data that says over 80% of our students have at least one adult in the school that they feel cares about them, respects them.
I've been having a counselor for three years, because I think it's a lot more helpful to have someone who you build trust with and know that far and they're a holler.
I think it's good to have a counselor throughout all your years in the middle school, because you can be more comfortable with them, and they know you for you, and it's just very helpful.
Yeah, I think it's good to have a counselor throughout your whole middle school, because it's good to build along with them and don't have to get to know somebody new each year and help them.
Keep counselors for all years.
Keep calm and keep your same counselor.
And we're the 22-23 East Counseling Department. In 2013, when I first started for it at East, I had 613 students on my caseload. Now I have 341.
Since increasing to 4.8 counselors, our time that we can spend with each student has more than doubled from 23 minutes per school year to 51 minutes per school year.
High school counselors have a variety of different goals. We're including a handout for the depth and breadth of the world for you.
Council health needs have grown both locally and nationally. A whole and a master's degree in school counseling. We've all been trained to provide Tier One, Two, and Three MTSS services to support our students and families on a daily basis.
These Esr-funded positions that some of us hold have added 1.8 counselors, which for inspiration rate, we spent 341 students. But the national recommended ratio for counselors is still 250 to 1 student. Thank you.
Our experience with our son's counselor at East has been very helpful in making sense of all the different options that are available for courses and classes. And she's also really responsive in making sure that she answers her emails and puts time on the books, and we can discuss something on the phone to keep things on track.
We feel very supported being new to high school, having just been our oldest, new to East, but then also our son is a junior, and so there's a lot of planning that's going into post-secondary as well. So, it's like keeping up with what's going on at East and credits and graduation, and then also answering all of our questions about what's coming up, what do we need to be on top of. Again, this all being new to us, Laura specifically, has been a great guide, a great person that we know we can turn to to get at least some direction, answers, connected to the right people, that sort of thing. And we just really value the role that she's having in our son's life.
We're the school counseling team from Denfeld High School. Denfeld is a unique building. We house 22 special education teachers, and over half of our population is on career-reduced lunch. With our diversity, we see the achievement gap at play every day. Our families are diverse, hardworking, and they all want their children to succeed. We want to give you a glimpse of what a typical English 11 classroom looks like at Denfeld. A classroom of 29 students has two English language learners, two students on 504 plans, two homeless students, five who are on individual education plans due to a disability, and 18 students, or 62%, who are on career-reduced lunch. All of these things tied together to create unique challenges in getting students across the stage. You can see we had the making progress until the pandemic. Our graduation rate dropped 9.9% in our first year back to full in-person learning, and we are still learning every day with the impact that COVID had on our families, especially those in poverty. We believe that our MTSS pyramid is really the letter I. Interventions for all at the bottom, a smaller Tier Two, and a large Tier Three with a high level of needs. The needs within our student population at Denfeld are varied and often more extreme and complicated to address. Ultimately, if students' mental health and physical needs are not being met, they are statistically less likely to succeed academically and graduate high school. From a personal perspective, we estimate that our counseling office used to deal with mental health about 15% of the time, and now it is 80% of what we do on a daily basis. While we do have in-school resources, Denfeld has three agencies providing mental health services. All three have a waitlist, just like most of our community supports. As counselors, we utilize every resource available, and yet it is still not enough to support our students in the way that they need. While these students wait for outside services, we are the people who do our best to hold them together. We are very grateful for the Esr funds that were granted. The money allowed us to try to maintain and improve student mental health, academic, and attendance support systems within Denfeld. Data from our staff, students, and community have indicated the needs for these supports. We expanded the building assets, reducing risks, or BAR program, to our sophomore class, serving an additional 235 students. The BAR program is now set up to monitor and support every freshman and sophomore. 1.2 counseling positions were added, making three full-time counselors for grades 10 through 12, and one full-time counselor dedicated to grade nine. The counselors are essential team members of the BAR program. We are beginning to see results. With four counselors, we are able to give students more time and attention. We hope to give a detailed presentation in April with data to show how all of our current interventions are positively impacting our students and our building. Without funding, we will not be able to keep counselors and many of our programs. Our graduation rate will continue to fall. We ask that you give every consideration to funding counselors, not only in our building, but in all ISD 709 schools. Thank you for your time and your attention.
Thank you, and I do want to take this opportunity to, Sarah, I want to make sure I say Segal. I wanted to make sure I said it correctly. Give an opportunity to share a little insight, but before I do that, I do want to let everyone know that this week is what? National School Counseling Week, so let's get along. So, thank you for everything you, you know, you do. And it's clear through the video that everyone is really working hard to meet the needs of the kids, and it is an important role. That's why we make sure with the additional Esr dollars that we use those resources to really support students. And so, just want to say thank you for everything you do. I know you don't hear it often, but we do appreciate everything you do and send to kids. So, do you want to add anything to...
We were just excited to present this year, because it was a year that you gave us more school counselors, and we really felt it, and it made a difference. And we just talked today that we heard that you were supporting the extension of those school counselors in all of our buildings, and we just really, really appreciate it. So, were there any questions about anything that was presented? Because our schools are different, like, and what we're able to provide is a little different.
Let me add something before, maybe a couple of hands. And thank you for acknowledging that one of the things that, as a district, we have been working on, the one that Esr sunsetted at the end of this year or end of next year. So, we have one more year of Esr dollars remaining. And with those resources, we, as a district, we've been really thoughtful and strategic about how we want to expend the remaining dollars. And one of the areas that we're spending on is to support our MTSS system, which you indicated. So, obviously, having counselors and interventionists is vitally important to support the MTSS system. So, we have expended those dollars for next year. And as a district, we are really thinking about how do we continue funding after next year? And so, more discussions on that, John, and then we'll take questions for our reporter.
I was just, I too wanted to say thank you for the work that each of you have done, thinking about this, not just as superintendent, but thinking about it from the role of an apparent who has had children, need their counselor greatly, or an administrator who has really needed my middle school counselors in a deep way when we're handling some difficult things. But also, as a student myself, I benefited from programming when I was a kid, having somebody that I could go to and talk with. I think it's very important. Also, a number of us are going to be spending the next two days at Duluth Days Down in St. Paul, and we're lobbying very, very hard for additional funding for mental health or MTSS, for other funds that would allow this, because it's great to have Esr-funded counselors, but that's only temporary. And I think that we need to make sure that when we think about what are students' basic needs, that we think about how can we fund this long-term, not just as a momentary piece. Yes, it does allow for a little more wraparound support as we're trying to get back to normal to some extent. But even that normal that we had before didn't have the support we needed for mental health. And I just want to speak as I have to give for that, which I appreciate it. One question I have, and this is not difficult, difficult, is sometimes I've also heard from our social workers that they feel some sense of frustration that it's, you know, we added quite a bit to counselors, but we didn't add as much to social workers. And it'd be nice to be able to, we can't do everything, but thinking about how that works together. Any thoughts as far as how to help your colleagues or social worker?
You need both. I'm just going to say we have different skill sets. Our training is different, who we work with in buildings can look really different. An asset as a school counselor is we work with all. So, we're, and it's different per district too. So, I'm going to be careful how I say this, because in our district, you, most of our social workers work with students on IUPs, but they don't work with all students on IUPs. So, that means that sometimes we work with students on IUPs also, dealing with different things. But it isn't, I wouldn't want you to choose one over the other, because they're different. That would be, it'd be like choosing a math teacher and not an English teacher. You need both.
We work perfectly together as a team. And you do, you need both. And we work with our social worker in our building, and we are cohesive and partners. And that's what we would love to see in every building.
Our social worker does have, now realize we have about 1,100 students, and she does have a point two general ed. So, one day a week, she works with some of our general ed students too. And I know those numbers are different at Denfeld and Lincoln, and probably East too, but...
Thank you.
Get us money.
Come with us.
We'll be working hard.
Yeah, show that video to them.
Yes, it's a great video.
Yeah, the video really helps all of us, and we'll watch it again, right? Because now it's maybe going to be shared with us, or?
Yes. And also with...
To get the data, the data, and continue to collect data for us. And I think you said you'd come back in the spring with some data.
We would love to come back as much as you would like us.
Well, sometimes just the handouts or just the information too is good. We have a lot of people that would, and will, come before us to share with us, you know, the things that are succeeding, and then still those challenges because of, you know, you make tough choices about where you place your dollars, but certainly.
And I think that's part of what becomes challenging is, as our former CFO said, we can do anything, but we can't do everything, right? So, how do we, how do we make sure that we're making really tough choices about where we put our very limited resources, where they're going to have the greatest impact on kids? And it's hard to make those decisions. You know, 250 to 1 would be wonderful if we could get there or at least continue to make progress in that direction. And I think as we think about the needs of our students, that's important. If we have opportunities sometimes with the finance committee or with the, when we're testifying basically on why we have these needs, they don't really care that much about hearing from administrators and board members. They care, but they'd rather hear from practitioners. So, maybe if there's a name or two, that if there's somebody who would be willing, if the opportunity arises, if you want to share, then we can tap into you so we can share your voices directly with our Senate and representatives that are advocating.
I believe we have some questions over here, so we'll browse them.
I'm very interested in how you see planning for the future with the expansion of counselors in elementary. Because, I mean, that's where kids, you know, are early learning, and I've always been curious why we haven't made that more of a priority. So, is there a plan to add more counselors? Is that part of the lobbying effort? And is there anything specifically already going through the legislature that would target that age?
So, there is funding specific for additional supports for MTSS as well as mental health, and just some general funding pieces that give us more resource to make more choices and choose more things we can say yes to related to elementary counseling. I think one, and I'm just going to put it out there, I think, I feel like we need to make sure that you have good representation and leadership with decisions at the district level too, that there are, I mean, I know that it's partially owned by the principals and partially owned through special education, but making sure that there's a direct line of who's listening to and who is thinking about that, those comprehensive needs is really important as well. So, thinking about, for example, middle or elementary counselors. I've seen elementary counselors and social workers in other districts. We don't have that as robustly planned now, but as Mr. Bonds is doing assessment of what are our basic needs for MTSS, I think that it's important to think about what role do and should counselors play in that.
And I'll add that we are in the process of doing that now. As a matter of fact, today, our cabinet plus, which includes various directors and senior leaders as well, we started the process of going deeper into our MTSS structure to start making some decisions on, you know, what positions potentially should we have to support Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three. Nothing has been determined. We have a long way to go in terms of deeper conversations, using data to inform our decisions, because, as Superintendent said, there are so many needs. You already know this, so I'm not preaching to the choir, but there are so many needs in the district in trying to decide which positions to fund, whether they're counselors, social workers, class size reduction, more digital technology, interventionists. I mean, there are so many needs in the district that we are really trying to do our very best to make some really thoughtful decisions and make sure that we, you know, fund the things that we prioritize through our strategic planning process. Oh, yes.
I'm sorry, but I think that's, going back to what you said, the difference or how we can work together with social workers. I think the biggest thing in what you say MTSS is we're specifically trained in those systems, so we can help, when you think of how can we support in that way, we were trained in a way of knowing how to work with those systems, so we can be ones, whether it is in elementary school, having a social worker and a school counselor and working together that way, and that school counselor being that...
And that school counselor being that MTSS support as well. Because in a perfect world, of course, it doesn't always happen, that is our role, is we want to be preventative. We want to not always be reactive. And sometimes with the needs of the students, we tend to be so reactive that we can't get into that proactive part. In an ideal world is we, we know how to do it, we can help other people and we can support our students in that way. And that's how we can work together with our social workers, because like they have said, they're, we work together so well and we can.
And again, we are specifically trained in MTSS already, and we're required to have a master's level degree in school counseling, K through 12. We already have that background.
Thank you. I know member Lockwood here.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you all so much. I guess, a couple of things. One is, I wouldn't mind if we could just take a minute and have you each. I, I know some of you, I know some of our board members. Go around and just say your name and what school you're at. So if you, if you could take that minute, I'd appreciate that. And then secondly, does, I, I love what you're doing at Lincoln Park in terms of moving with the students, physically moving with the students. Is that, is that happening at Ordean too?
This is the, the first year that I.
Right.
That we are really able to, because we have three counselors.
We've only ever had two counselors for three grade levels, 12, near 1,200 students. So we have not been able to.
Yeah.
In the past, but Sarah kind of moved.
Okay.
Which are great, yeah.
Okay, great, yeah. Because I, it was, it's clear that Lincoln Park has it for, for six years now, I think.
And they have about 620.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And, and I am a social worker and there is a clear difference, so. And thank you for your work. So if we could just go around really quick, and then also, you know, as Superintendent Megas said, I know some of us are going down lobbying the next couple of days, and this is just really great information. I remember similar information in other lobby visits, but this is really helpful. And I, I know I and I think others are also encouraging our parents to share their stories with state legislators about the need for more counselors in our schools. So I, I just did a sound letter for a group of parents the other day, and I said, make sure you highlight mental health services, so. Just quickly go around, and which school you're from as well.
So I'm Lauren Hudson. I'm the ESSER-funded eighth grade counselor at St. Paul High School.
I'm Leah Ham. I'm at Denfeld.
Megan Spurrel. I'm at St. Paul High School.
I'm Morgan Cosley. I'm the ESSER-funded school counselor, eighth grade counselor at Ordean Middle School.
I'm Laura Horton, high school counselor at East.
I'm Ashley Drowsky, school counselor at Ordean. I'm working with sixth grade this year.
I'm Sarah Seiglem. I'm the seventh grade school counselor at Ordean.
I'm Jerry Sari. I'm a high school counselor at Denfeld and a licensed social worker. I was a social worker prior to becoming a high school counselor under the time.
I'm Jessica Fordsman. I'm a counselor at Duluth Middle School.
Thank you. I think we have time for maybe one more question, and then we have another please that we have other presenters here.
So I'll, I'll jump in. Oh, no, I can't. So is, but the tier one, two, and three, which was just, it was not in the high school when I was teaching. It was, it was elementary and I remember Assistant Superintendent Starzecy, you know, just really being able to focus on some elementary MTSS. So I, I love that you're skilled in it, that you're trained in it, that you've got your degrees in it. Classroom teachers, I, I thought they were more the instructionalist or the team of tier one, two, and three. So tell me a little bit about how you work with classroom teachers in the MTSS model. Briefly.
At Denfeld, PBIS, some of our, our basic programs in our building are tier one. So it starts with a, a group of, a core groups of people that put everything together to disperse the teachers. So it is presented help to them. So, and then there's follow-up, and we're, we're not doing like social-emotional learning in the classroom at our level at Denfeld.
At our level at Ordean, we, the, a lot of our tier ones are going into the classroom and teaching those social-emotional lessons, teaching career exploration, teaching, you know, conflict resolution, bullying, any kind of major topics, race, inclusion, a number of things. And even think that, that teachers say, hey, you know, we need, we need a little bit extra help on this, or we see that there's a need, or there's an academic.
We model like trauma-informed responses, right? Within that lesson with the teacher there, or they might have.
In wins?
No, we actually teach them in classroom. So we are modeling different ways of interacting with students that the teachers then can naturally take that with the way that we responded in that trauma in a way. Or there might be a high behavior situation, and then we can work with that student. And we are modeling right then and there in front of the teacher, different ways of handling that situation.
And the great thing is then after we go in the classroom and we, let's say, talk about a certain topic, then sometimes those students will get identified after saying, hey, these group of students need a little extra help. Okay, maybe it's a group focused on study skills or academics or conflict resolution or friendships or something, where then we use that data that, hey, these students maybe need that extra scoop of that, that's where we can come in and provide that tier two on more of a one-on-one level.
And it also brings a full circle of language and vocabulary throughout our building. And it also sets the stage of expectations around our building. It all comes full circle with everyone. Or if the teacher has a question about something, we're able to then refer, or if we do have a discipline report, we can then refer to what we talked about in the classroom. Or Megan used the three Rs of bullying, right? Like recognize, report, review. It's kind of the go-to language. And once everybody kind of starts using that, it becomes much easier in a moment.
And like I said, I noticed a, a lot of legislative opportunities in the MTSS area in the safe schools funding. Lots of dialogue in that bill, so you give us rich information to bring back. My last question is, for our high school counselors, are we still wrapped into MCA administration? That's what you do somewhat, or do we have a test administrator? You guys are still doing MCA testing?
No, we've been out of that for several years now.
Oh, you have? Who's doing that then?
It was, it's, it's a psych initiative. So either for a teacher or.
Oh, okay, okay.
Or a employee who does that. And that's been maybe the last five or six years.
About the same time I've been retired.
We still do the displacement testing and the ACT date testing. So we do have those, and the PSAT and the ASAP. So there is still.
There's still tests.
There's still ones. And plus, when you're talking about the MTSS, we are also a part of our BAR program, right? We tend to bring the at-risk, we're on SST, we're on DRT, we are on all the teams, the mental health team, we are a part of all of that.
We really thank you for coming. And also want to say, when you mentioned BAR and many of you are working with BAR, just to note that we, we did celebrate and recognize that you won a pretty prestigious national award last year for your BAR program. And I just wanted to say thank you for not just being leaders within your school, but being leaders in the state. Thank you.
And the person who runs it, our program, is the school.
Thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you.
And, and before we move to our next presentation, I would be remiss not to just restate again. This is an example of how we leverage the ESSER dollars that we receive from the state to support mental health services in our schools, to support students. Often we are, there's questions regarding like how, how have we spent the money and where was the money spent? And, you know, no matter how many times we've shared examples of where we've spent the resources, having teams like this come and share and especially state how their positions are funded, really highlight that, you know, these are the things that we use those resources for. Just want to share that with the community. And so now we have a, a presentation by our executive director, Zunich, Simone, and executive director, as well, Teresa Severance.
No, I think.
Oh, just.
And I will be sharing as well.
Yeah. I'll come to sit next to you.
It's more dialogue.
Teresa's like, what?
She's welcome.
Yeah.
You're a team.
We are a team.
We're a team.
So I know that there have been, and I can start, and this is not a presentation, but more of an opportunity for dialogue and conversation. I know that we're considering our resources of time and finance. There are, there are many different priorities that we consider. We've heard about some of them and often hear about them. One of the things that we want to pursue is how, how can we make sure that our schools are sustainable? And how are we making sure that we're not creating a greater carbon footprint when we do our work? And also how do we, how do we engage in things like solar power, renewable energy? Thinking about as we're doing building on new sites, we have some of the groundwork put in for EV chargers and things like that. So it's important for us to really consider where are we related to those, those projects? We also know that, and this was shared with the board and shared with others, that our, our facilities director is retiring somewhat unexpectedly. We knew he would be retiring sometime soon, but will be retiring in the next couple of weeks. So part, part of that does put some challenges on our capacity. And I would say that our capacity has been pretty tight for some time. But I do, I do know that it is a strong interest of the board for us to consider solar projects and the solar grants that we have available as well, as well as things that we consider too. There is a solar grant opportunity that came available. The letter of intent originally was due yesterday. That has been extended to February 21st, I believe. And when I say letter of intent, sometimes people think, oh, it's, you know, a couple paragraphs and saying that we're interested. The letter of intent actually is a 10-page, has a 10-page instruction guidance on what we need to do and put into it. So it's, it's a major, major product. I did talk with, with Mr. Spooner about how long he would, he thought that would take four facilities and, and they thought it would probably take, you know, approximately a week of time, but that would be pretty well heavily dedicated. We have had offers from other people in the community to help with those projects, people from the city, people from other organizations. And it's important for us to, to consider that. We did put forward a proposal for a smaller scale, somewhat, but foray into solar, which was the proposal that we shared from, from Mr. Spooner earlier this week. And that would be to put forward two solar arrays, one at each of the middle schools. It was, I think it's called a tree or flagpole, flagpole solar option. And it, it would allow us to start piloting in that direction. So I think that there's, there's benefit there. I think we also have heard many times from our creative students and community members that we want to explore what curriculum we might be able to use too, to make sure that we're, we're thinking about renewable energy and, and the environment in meaningful ways. So it is something that we are, are considering. Again, there are, even when, and I'm, I'm just trying to portray things in an open and honest way. When we think about, yes, we have people volunteering to help write the grant, it, it does also mean a huge investment of time and effort by the people that have the information here. And I do, I, for, for the grant itself, I do have some concerns that I have to be forthright with the board about related to using the last, you know, if, if Mr. Spooner is only with us for the next two or three weeks, that if we're using a week of that time to devote to this project, there are impacts. But we have put together that, that pilot proposal with those two smaller arrays that could be used at both of the middle schools to move forward with solar and also use it as a learning opportunity. The, I know that there's also been examination of what are the costs, the financial costs of the district, and I'm sure Simone or Teresa can talk more about that. There is a 70/30 match basically is the, the most that a district can get, but there are some different criteria that we have to look at related to the size of the district and the finance of the district. That basically, we, we did have Pat Obrum from, from ICS look at it, and they felt that we would be more likely to get closer to 30% covered by the state grant and 70% would come from district. So there's, there's financial impact there. But we would be interested in moving forward with that, that project. It would be an investment of about $150,000 as a first foray into the work of sustainable energy for our schools. But we, we also know that there's interest by the district, interest by others to, to consider the, the grant opportunity. And I thought that's why I want, we're seeking clarification from the board on, on what your, what your intents and, and I'm not asking for necessarily for a directive from the board one way or the other, but I, I want to lay out there that, that we do have moderate, at least moderate to serious concerns about, about what it would mean to, to move forward with full, full writing of that grant. It doesn't mean that we couldn't take some time in the next couple of weeks to, to, to go deeper and have the conversations and really talk with the community partners and see what would it mean. But I, but I want us to be careful that we're not over-promising and under-delivering to people that are really counting on, on this. Because I think it is something that people have put their heart and minds into and have really done some positive push, that have made some big differences in the, in the funding for these grants. We also are within our legislative platform that we're pushing and working on tomorrow and the next day. We have proposals to increase the, the funding for solar projects within schools. We know it's a priority for our district and that's why we made it part of our legislative platform. And so making sure that we have those opportunities written into our, our, our laws and our budgets within the state so that it can help schools is something that'll benefit not just to leave but others. I've turned it over to Simone or Teresa to add anything that you want to add.
The financial impact is, you know, if we go for the flagpole, not through a grant, it would cost the district up to $250,000. We might have to look into our general fund budget and find that money to support that. And I think we did have some voice from the city of Duluth saying that it, it, these projects are nice. It would take 16 to 20 years to see.
Return on investment?
The return on investment, thank you. So, yes, we can do that, but as Superintendent Megas said, do we want to make that investment out of our general fund and go forward with it? It has been highly recommended from facilities manager Spooner, that the person who does, if we decide to go with the grant, that the person who writes the grant is also the one that prepares the product and follows through with the implementation of it. Because it involves curriculum and, and that is a great point. You know, Teresa and I can sit here and write up a grant all we want, but we need the person that really will be doing the work to actually write the grant. So I thought that was a great point. But, no, we can make anything happen if we need to.
And I would propose that if we're moving forward in that direction, that we consider, you know, possibly hiring for some outside help to, to make sure that, that, that happens. Because if they're, given the transition with our facilities manager, if we're going to have that, then maybe we have somebody hired as a consultant to help shepherd the process. So that would be something that, that I think if we're, if we're going to do it, we want to do it right. But there is some financial investment that we need to consider.
Where else are they using these solar trees or flagpole-type solar projects? And how successful have they been? Have you, have you put on that?
That's a great question that I know. I don't know where else. I know the, from a, I know what you're defining as successful, if it's, we, we probably need to ask additional questions.
There's a lot of ways to define successful.
Yeah, exactly.
And, and I get that. I mean, you know, so where have they used them? Can, if we did this, what can we learn from it? You know, how can it expand either on those specific sites or is it something we can spread around easily to our elementary sites, high schools, and then, and build on that? I mean, you know, to me, it's kind of like, okay, I think we all want to plant the seeds and get this started. And, because we have been talking about this and hearing about this from our community and our students for. Because we have been talking about this and hearing about this from our community and our students for a number of years now. And I think that's part of where I'm coming from too. You know, I mean, if this is a way to plant the seeds of building on something that can grow.
Well, we can certainly ask that question.
Absolutely. Good questions.
And if I could chime in, according to the recipients of the, you have it displayed on the screen, you have solar grants that have been approved by school districts under the first round. I'm just showing you the list of the districts. There are 45 districts that have received grants so far. Now, I can't say this based on this.
Those are the grants.
Those are the panels.
Those are the panels, right. That's different than what we're kind of discussing here as kind of a starting point.
And to, and honestly, to do this grant, we should do it the right way and give it our full attention. But as Superintendent said, it would take a team of people to get together and really write that properly. Mr. Spooner came up with a great solution for temporarily is to try these flagpoles. But I think we should ask those questions and see if that is something where we can start, a small project.
Unfortunately, he's not adhering as to, how much, how much energy is that going to provide for that building and for that site? Is it something that's worthwhile? And I look at it as a, as a, let's get plenty of seed, it's a starting point that we build on and expand if that, if it works.
So I think it is intended as an energy resource. And it's not meant as like a, like a, you know, toy solar project or anything. So it's meant as something to produce energy and be a sustainable resource. It's not a major resource like a rooftop array. I think it would be nice for us to be able to consider rooftop array and/or thinking about, you know, maybe even combining forces with a number of schools and have a broader solar array in an old mine pit or, you know, something that would, well, mine pits are pretty shadowy. But somebody was suggesting that in the tailings area or something like that, to be able to put together something with partnering of school pits, school districts, so that we could have a major solar project from that perspective. I think, so I think what we're saying this, we realize that this is a little bit of a middle of the road and moderate investment rather than major investment. But it is, we have heard out in clear from the board and community that this is important. And I also think that when we think about the future, the future of our country and the future of our world, that we are seeing some pretty major changes. And it's important for entities that have resource to think about things long-term to be pioneers in that area as well. We talked about pioneering with some of our things with policy. It's important for us to sometimes demonstrate too that we're dedicating resource and attention to solar resources as well. So if that's the desire of the board, that would be something that we would.
I do have a question, if you would dare, Peter.
Yeah. We should make sure we're, I think all of us have questions. No, I think that, but just, who do you want to pay, you want me to pay attention or do you want?
You want to pay attention.
Okay, perfect.
Remember, you're Peter.
So I'm going to be blunt. The Duluth Public Schools is in the business of educating kids, not generating power. And if we look at just a couple of flagpoles at $150,000 as an investment for this district with a 16 to 20-year return on investment, $150,000 is at least probably one FTE as a teacher or a counselor and probably adding in a para. Having this discussion in juxtaposition with the counselor, where we're talking about ester-funded counselors that we are trying to need to figure out how to sustain those positions into the next probably five to 10 years and talking about expanding it into that elementary school. I am absolutely empathetic and pay attention to the community's want for us to think about how we reduce our carbon footprint. But that, I'm not sure that that's the job of the school district. That's the job of probably a city and a state government. We have a lot of things to concentrate on, and we have a lot of impediments and barriers that make this very, very difficult, including the retirement of Mr. Spooner, including the investment of our staff's time to write a grant and to figure out. So the bottom price that we're talking about of an investment is $150,000 in addition to talking about hiring outside help to get us to use that or direct us in that way, tell us how to use it, and then talking about sort of hanging on it in a way of adding curriculum. We haven't even had a discussion with how do you build curriculum around this. So I hear the community and I understand the want and the need for the solar in the schools. But what I'm looking at it from is looking at the great needs within our district. And I don't think that using general fund resources of around, starting at $150,000 is a way that I would be comfortable with spending that money. I'm open to listening, and I, of course, will always follow what the board does. But I am vigorously saying that I don't think this is the right time and the place for us to do this. And then even taking it one step further is, okay, we've spent how much money looking at our strategic plan and connecting things and directing the future of this district with looking at our student daily experience and what our family and staff and students want our students to experience. And I'm not sure how we take this project and put it back to what we've been working on.
That's a good question. Just Simone, based on what you just said. Would this come out of general fund or would it come out of capital budget?
It's all the same.
It's all, okay, thank you.
Fund one, three, and fund one is our general fund, our wages, salaries. Fund three is our transportation, and five is capital. We separate them in the budget to look at, but they're all, because they're all the general fund.
I'm not sure whose next, but.
I think it's Mr. Aswell.
Member Aswell.
Remember, here, I completely echo what you're going to say. And I'm going to offer some supporting thoughts of all this. With not the very least is that this is already on our legislative platform. So to change the program to make it more suitable to what we want, we'd be shooting ourselves in the foot to apply now for a program that isn't changed to what we're asking for. And legislators are going to look at that and probably ignore the rest of what we're asking for because they're like, well, they're already just making do with what's already out there. You know, they can do that with all the rest that are asked too. I don't want to jeopardize any of our asks. I want to make them important, and I want to get the best value for our buck. And asking to change the program, I think, is the very first thing we can do to make it more palatable. The other thing that I find really contradictory is that, you know, a couple months ago, Superintendent Magus shared with us that we are not allowing any new grant processes to happen in the district because we are over our capacity in writing grants and our ability to do that. And thus, we have passed up grants that have directly affected student achievement. And if we go and ask to approve this grant that has very negligible effects on student achievement, that's, I believe that's fiscally irresponsible of me to do that. Because we are in the business of student achievement, plain and simple. Yeah. I also believe that, you know, with some SCA's becoming a real thing now and our scores hovering in the 20 percentiles, adding more into teachers, onto teachers' plates right now that aren't state standards and aren't things that are part of the core curriculum is only going to detract from us trying to do better on what we need to demonstrate our student achievement. And that needs to be a very focused effort. And I don't know what the teachers of the district think about this, you know, having to implement and be forced into a new curriculum, that they may have little say-so or not. I don't know how it's going to happen. They might have great say-so, but it's going to take time to implement if they do. It's super hard to ask teachers to teach new things when they, when I already can guarantee their reaction is, you know, we're already overwhelmed and you're asking me to do what, put more on my plate? You know, they don't like that. I want to know if this is something that teachers actually do support or not. I don't know. And a bigger question is, what are we displacing with the cost of solar if we do it now? There, you know, there's only so much money, so that money is already spent somehow. So what is, what is going to be dropped in order to make this happen? And what are the replacement costs of, like, how long does this work? How long does this happen? You know, when do we have to replace or upgrade or, you know, what do we do with it when it wears out? Can we can't just throw it on a landfill, I don't imagine. I have no idea. And that would be completely against the point of being environmentally responsible. I, you know, I come right back to, there is no rush to do this next week or whenever it is. There is no rush. We have time, we have a backup plan to buy and test things ourselves. If the solar funding goes away, we still can pursue our backup plan. But we need a better grant process because we are a larger school district. A lot of the examples I, you know, I have heard, you know, like Herman Towne is, you know, using this grant and all that list of schools that are using this grant. The vast majority I saw, you know, they have one or two school buildings for their entire district. We have, you know, I think it's 19 buildings total for everything we do, maybe 20. You know, how, that's why we need to ask the legislature to change the program for larger districts to make it possible to have a significant impact with installing solar. I mean, putting up, you know, one solar panel or one small array, you know, yes, that is, that is a dipping your toe in the water. But where is, where is the continuity? Where is the equitability? You know, where does, where does that one or two go? I mean, you know, yes, placing the middle schools is very equitable, but you know, does Stowe need it or Lakewood need it more? I don't know. But where, and how are those decisions are made? There's a lot going on. And not knowing who is going to administer the grant in the district with the departure of Mr. Spooner and all of his support team, we don't know the talent that we're going to have or that we're going to be able to find somebody to replace him right away. It's super hard to know our future in limbo. And yet another reason to pause and advocate for a different, for, positive advocate for more inclusivity for larger school districts to be able to significantly, you know, invest in the solar industry rather than just one or two.
Remember, since Aswell's had a question and.
If I could make just one clarifying comment on Ross's comments. And because part of it might have come from misinformation or mischaracterization of what I might have said. So related to not, there's a ban on or that we're stopping any other grant writing. Not so much that we're completely stopping grant writing, but we're being very, very cautious about what new things we're taking on. But as, as Member Dirk Eater mentioned, we're trying to look at our strategic plan and being more laser-like in our focus. And we are, we are hearing from our team, not just our operations team, but our teaching and learning team, that they've taken on as much as they can productively. And so we really have to be very carefully careful about taking on new grants or new projects. So it's not that there's like a 100% ban on grants. If somebody comes up with a really easy form that gives us 100% funding for some things that are easy to put in place, we'll be first in line. But I would say that we can rededicate ourselves over the course of the next couple of days of thinking about how can we advocate more for solar during our lobbying efforts? Because when we have a lot of one-time money on the table, that is a good time for states to make choices about deeper investment. Because an investment in solar would be something that the state, if the state did that, that would help districts financially for a long time down the road as opposed to just, just right now. I apologize for.
No, that's okay. Thanks for the clear. I am really glad that we're focusing on solar on our legislative platform. I think that Member Dirk Eater and Member Aswell made some good points. I mean, we do need to focus on our strategic plan and where that is directing us to focus. But when I think of student achievement and I think, I think back to even before I was on the board, being at some school board meetings and hearing from the climate club, those students were exemplifying the passion and skills and everything that we want to see in our students. That's what they were exemplifying, making connections, advocating, you know, doing really good research. I mean, and that's what we want to see, and that's what they exemplified. And sometimes it really, it is really good to focus on the core learning. But sometimes it's these other things that really kind of strike that passion in our students. And it's really, really, it is related to student achievement. I was wondering where, when you said 70-30 match, like, were you talking about this grant? And that it really would be a 30-70? Can you tell me more about where you learned that and what research it's been on?
So Pat Oberon, who works for ICS, who does a lot of our facilities work in contract work, including the project on the hill. And part of the reason why he was involved in the conversation is because he is the project manager for that. And we asked, you know, about putting arrays on the bus garage. And so we continue to have conversations around this because it's important to us. There is criteria within the grant that outlines, from what I understand, Mr. Spooner isn't here, but I can give more information related to the size of the district. So smaller districts get a bigger percentage than larger districts. And that is the main criteria that factors to make our amount less. Because what they figure is that larger districts have more financial opportunity to make those investments because they might have larger capital reserve or, you know, financial reserves. I think that we know that as a district, we are coming back financially. But we were also at a point, you know, two and a half years ago and just before that, where we were down to about $300,000 in our fund balance, which a district of our size would normally have 10 million. And so districts that have had a more robust fund balance have more money to invest in longer-term projects that pay off later than we would. But that particularly, that 30-70 piece, that's what I have been told. But I'm hearing varying sources, and I also know that there are other entities out there that are interested in funding too. So I think we, I don't, in any way, if the, if board is, if we go in a direction where we're, where we're not moving forward with this project, I don't want that to in any way be seen as a no to solar, but a not, not yet, and what can we do next?
Well, on that note, like, and just from my perspective, I mean, this was a year ago that I feel like we were having some of these conversations, and kind of here we are again. And so kind of, kind of where I'm at is, I get Member Dirk Eater's point about, you know, the expense. And when I looked at the solar trees, those are the questions that I had. And this is a lot of money to be spending on something that, yes, will produce energy, but probably not, not a whole lot. There's a really good educational piece, but is it, is it worth it compared to the money you're spending? But I think to your point, there are a lot of other groups that want to be involved in this. And I just, I don't want to see it kicked down the, down the line another year. I would like to see some, you know, when I have a big project to do at home or at work during my life, you know, I want to work on it a little bit at a time with my goals. So I have my goal out a year, and what am I going to work on? I'm going to work on building those community partnerships. I'm going to work on figuring out how will we implement the curriculum so that the next time we see this come around, and I think we will. I don't think this is the last solar grant that we're going to see, and that's the good news. And if we're going to be putting it on our legislative platform, hopefully we can because our district does get kind of overlooked in many financial areas. Kind of that we're in that middle, middle to be, so it's kind of where I'm at.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
I'm sure, I'll go next. A couple of things, we've mentioned the legislative platform a lot, and I just, we have some folks here. I want to read what we have on our legislative platform that the board approved just a couple shy months ago and that we're, as many of us are going to be lobbying on tomorrow. What is on our legislative platform with solar is we support. What is on our legislative platform with solar is we support adding additional funding to the Solar for Schools Grant Program and increase the grant opportunity to a hundred percent installation cost for a forty megawatt array and help schools with federal matching dollars for EV charging stations at school properties. I was really proud of us as a board and our administrators for putting this on the legislative platform because we had many competing things we could have put on here. Because our legislative platform really has only one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, eleven areas. We have a hundred areas that could have been on this legislative platform. So one is, you know, I want the public to know we have been working on this. And one of the ways we worked on it is getting it on our legislative platform. As we've been meeting with legislators, they look at our whole platform. We're talking with them about our whole platform. So, you know, I do want to acknowledge the work we have been doing. I know there was a lot of time put into this proposed project that you sent to us last week with the solar trees. And that took time of our staff to do. And I really appreciate that proposal, even though it's looking at using our district one hundred and fifty thousand dollars of our own money, not looking at the grant. I share some of the same concerns as Member Eater does about using one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that project. I am curious, or I did do a little homework on solar trees versus solar panels. And a website, folks who are interested, who might want to go to, is called ecowatch.com. They just had a recent article on their website that talks a lot about solar trees versus solar panels. And so there's a number of other groups, and I'm sure some of the folks that are sitting here could even tell us, of other sites. But that is just one I recommend based on some of my own research. So we did that, and I thank you for doing that and putting that time into it. I want to see us do solar work, both curriculum work as well as project work for lots of reasons. But I also know this past year, we had a transition with our business, our CFO, in July. And then now it's very significant that we are having our facility person moving on. Someone who's had almost thirty years with our district, with our buildings. To replace him is going to be hard. And I am, you know, I know a lot of his time has been also with our project on the hill as well as us still coming out of COVID and all of our facility issues that come with that. So I'm kind of sitting here thinking and concerned about this smaller project that we would fund ourselves right now with this transition we now are facing. That we, you know, it's fairly recent that we know we are facing this transition with a pretty important person for all of our facility work. So, and so one of my questions when you presented Simone was, we could do a contractor, but that's also a cost. Let's not be.
It's all a cost.
It's all a cost, yeah.
None of it is for free.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, even if we did any big project, we have to pay seventy percent of it. It's a half a million dollars to line our transportation department. I mean, I'd have to find a half a million dollars. It would come out of the project probably up there, which means less money for technology. So it all has a direct impact. But yes, to hire anyone, it would cost. We have labor and installation.
And if we were to go that route, I guess I just flag board members that we would want to find a contractor that has worked with school districts because of our own unique circumstances that we need to deal with. The other, I guess, piece, and again, I'm just kind of thinking about the conversations people have had. My concern when we, last year at our NSBA conference, when many of us went to some workshops on this grant, and I ask this question quite a bit because I caught that thirty seventy percent, what we would still have to pay, and that they really favored smaller school districts, not school districts our size. So I'm glad that you kind of clarified that, and it's been clarified. And also that my understanding with that ten-page letter of intent is that there has to be kind of curriculum plan already. And I don't know how we would do that in the next few weeks also without kind of have, you know. I don't know if, as a board member, I could suggest to you that David Spooner should be spending his time on this when he's got lots of pieces to do a transition with. So I'm kind of all over the board right now on where I think we should go.
I think as we think about what is our vision moving forward, Mr. Spooner is dear and dear to all of us. And he has shepherded the facilities of our district for decades, you know, full generation plus. And I think it's important for us as we're looking at what are our structures within facilities and what are we looking for in a in-person within this role or a similar role for us to think about where does renewable energy and sustainability and carbon footprint lie in our philosophy on facilities? I think the basic philosophy is we need to make sure we have safe, clean, welcoming environments for learning. But it is also important for us to be responsible for, you know, to the community and to the world. So as we're looking at that hiring process, thinking about, you know, what experiences and skill sets do people bring? And how can we also, you know, potentially recruit and hire somebody who not only can do our general facilities work, but that maybe has some experience with solar projects or maybe. Like, that would be a great skill set for somebody to have as they come in. It can't be the first, like, we can't just say, you do solar and then as a first priority, hopefully you can do something with facilities. It has to be somebody who understands facilities. But there are facilities, leaders in our community and other places that have a stronger background in solar, and that is something that I think we need to seek out. So I think, again, looking at that. And I would say, you know, the grant does provide some free money for the district with dedication. And saying no to writing the grant is not done lightly by me or my team. Because to take it just out of general fund to do has more of an impact on the district. It has more of an impact there. And so when we're putting forward a proposal, it's partly because we're saying, we hear you, we hear everyone and want to do something. And if there's a something to be done, this is the something that when we weigh everything on the scales of time, resource, experience, this is what we would say is our best kind of compromise offer at this point. I do think it's important for us to advocate and continue to lobby. And I also think it's important for us to have some degree of community outreach, maybe a public forum, maybe some sort of opportunity for conversation with the entities that are interested. Because just saying, if people feel like, oh, the district said, no, we don't care about solar. We don't have time for it. If that's the simplified message, that's not what I want to be part of. I think we're hearing amongst all of us, and we see in our legislative platform, we see in the work of the district, that we need to move forward. And we need to make sure that we aren't just kicking the can down the road, that it's a plan and that there's structure to it. And I also think it's important as we do our strategic planning work that we lay out where does that fall? Because we need to make sure we know what our priorities are if we're moving forward together. So I would also say as we do our lobbying efforts, quite often, they care a little bit about what superintendents think. They care a little more about what principals and teachers think. But they also really care about what our students think. So if there's an opportunity for testimony before the finance committee or anything else, it would be great for us to be able to reach out to people who might be in our possible audience tonight and think about how can we bring people forward? Because it's important that we own this together moving forward.
Well, let's just remember that they already did testify last term. And they're well remembered, and our district is seen as a real light in this. So, you know, let's remember that. And I'm sorry, I'll go back to David or Rosie. Did you have some?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up with saying that. And so I do hope if anybody in addition is lobbying on this, you can use the same language that is in our legislative platform right here. Just because that kind of consistency coming from all of us in the district is really helpful. So, you know, I look forward to talking tomorrow with folks about this as I'm down at the Capitol.
Member Sodowsky, yes? Ah, yes. I guess first of all, I'd like to say I'm really in favor of using non-renewable energy. Very much. And I was looking at it my own home. But when you talk to the people that are dealing with this, they will say right away, don't look on it as an investment that's going to save you money. It is not right away. It just isn't. You have to do it for other reasons as well. And it can save you money in the long run, but we're looking at a long run. But I think at the schools, it has a curricular element too. And we shouldn't lose sight of that. Climate change and environmental degradation are with us, and those aren't going away. And we need to do what we can. And I think that the kids who came to us from Ordene have looked into this, and we have to support that as much as we can. I'm not sure what had been said about solar panels at the garage. But learning more about the grant and how much time it takes and how much the curricular element of it is important. I think we need to do that in the best way we can. Maybe there are other things we can do. We can turn down the heat in the buildings. I mean, really, that would do things too. It doesn't need to be whatever it is. There's other ways that we can do things as well. So I support this. And I think that taking time to look at the solar tree or whatever that is, is good. These solar panels last a long time. And I was told the ones that I was looking at in my house, they can give you ninety-five percent efficiency in twenty years. I mean, that's good. Now, in the winter, we're not going to get a lot of time. We're not going to make money out of this. But we can't look at it as saving us money. That's not the issue. So I think what Kelly said was right on. But I would support looking at the other option that Dave Spooner had said, but taking time to do it. I think that the grant doesn't seem to be our cup of tea at this point.
And I want to take this time to thank, we do have some visitors here. It was a coincidence that around the time there was more discussion around solar panels, the Climate Club reached out and said, hey, where are you in this? And I said, hey, by the way, we were thinking of a proposal that we will be moving forward, and you should come and listen to the discussion. And so they did join us. And I want to say thank you for coming and listening to the dialogue. And at least you now hear the varied perspectives and things that go into, you know, how decisions are made. And so I just want to say thank you for coming and continue to advocate.
And I have a few things to add, but did you want to say something first?
I was just going to say as well, thank you. And as we think about how can we be ready for next time, thinking about what does the curriculum development look like? So that we're not scrambling at the end saying, well, we have to develop the curriculum and we don't have time. That would allow us to research and think about what would be best for our kids and be fitting with the science curriculum and everything else. So I'm hopeful that not just from this group, but from the other entities with whom we work, that we have a thoughtful conversation about how to move forward together. That it's not a pitting of us versus them because we all have the same objective. We just need to find a slightly better path, given our current situation.
So you set me up quite well as well when we want to make sure. So it took me all of about an hour today, and I'm sorry that I wouldn't have done this a year ago. This is, you know, historically, we've been on this journey for a year. And I think some of us thought that there are more things going on in our progress. I do want to say, I think, we put this on the agenda today because we really just, we knew that there was a deadline yesterday, and we knew that there might be some movement or there might be some opportunity to discuss it. But as a board, we haven't really figured this out or really had a good dialogue on it as far as where are we at as a board? I think we all made assumptions that we're all on board. We went to the convention last year, and it was the hot topic. And our students come, and they were energizing and passionate. So, you know, historically, we've been on a journey. But today is really our first day of really having, you know, good, really good conversation and questions and reminders and information. So I really appreciate us having this opportunity to do this. So this afternoon, I just quickly went on the letter, you know, the grant application form. And it is ten pages like we know. And it does, there is a lot to this. You know, if I would have looked at this four months ago, I might not have been so like, oh, you know, well, it's just a letter of intent. It must be just, you know, a letter of intent like I've seen before. When I'm going to go for the Patchell Foundation, I have to write a letter of intent. And it's a letter, one page, that I'm going for that grant. So, you know, I do, I don't know if I want to apologize or if I just want to say I became more aware, you know, this afternoon that the grant is on the site. It's very easy to access. I would tell all of us to look at it. It talks about two years of monthly electric use that data has to be collected for that. It has four or five curriculum development plan points that are clearly laid out for what we need. But it would take us a lot of time to put together that. And I did go back and listen to our Ordene East presentation when we were at Denfeld. And they have a lot of information that we could ask them to come back and help us with. If you listen to them, you know, they already told us curricular things. They already told us state standard things. They already let us know, you know, some process things. And so I talked to Members Sodowsky a little bit about this over the last week, that we need to come back and have a conversation and go back and look at the research you gave us and help us be ready. The other thing I did today very quickly, and I know that Peter is probably very interested in helping schools. So his name is Peter Lindquist. He is the man that is kind of at the head of this for the Minnesota Department of Education grant. Is that where it's coming from, I think? Minnesota Department of Commerce. And so, you know, Peter tells me that, you know, he linked me right away into our city with Mindy and all the different help. They've got a branch off of this commerce department called CERTS, C-E-R-T-S. It is a whole laid-out plan of help that would help our district do all of this for the grant. But the more interesting thing in dialogue and email with Peter is that he is pretty sure, although the legislature can do anything they want to do, but he does say that they've allocated eight million in the legislative platform for this next round of solar in the schools' grants outside of the EXL Energy Territory, which is us. And so he expects that that grant cycle will start in the fall of twenty-three. You know, so again, if, you know, if we are interested in what we can do, I'm not as interested in the solar tree. I'm not. I'd rather work with our students, work with our staff, work with our next financial, and see where it's going. I don't think it's going to go away. I mean, I think the legislature is going to probably approve this. We're going to see some more grants in twenty-three, but I bet we'll see grants in twenty-four. I bet we'll see grants in twenty-five. You know, they're going to continue because all of us are committed for this. So I think, yeah, I think that's all I have.
Member Luffold.
Yeah, thank you for all that information, Member Luffold. You know, I just wanted to correct one thing is that we actually did spend time, it was either in February or March, I can't remember. I was trying to look up Board Book, where we had a committee of the whole meeting about this topic. And David Spooner and at the time CFO Erickson did some homework for us. We talked about the ten pages of the letter of intent there, I remember. And I know Members Sandholm and Member Sodowsky and I kind of shared information from the workshops that we attended in January. And so, you know, I just want to, you know, again, go back to what have we done? To me, that was. To me, that was an important conversation we had with our administrators, with our superintendent and with each other to say, we all are supportive of the idea of the district investing in solar work and, and that. And then at the time, you know, we, we did hear the concern about the timing of moving forward. And so I, I, I don't want to forget kind of the discussions we all have had to say, yes, I think there is support for this. Just kind of the timing of it and, 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 and the, the, um, having the right person in place to also have those pulled together, those potential community partners. That's not an easy thing to do as well. And, and so I, I like that idea of as we're looking at doing a hiring to, to also be thinking of different skill sets that person may or may not bring in. But at least asking the questions as we're looking at potential applications as well. So just also go back to that meeting that we had either February or March because I remember a very good conversation that happened as us as board members as well.
Because we had just come back from the conference and had gotten a lot of that information on the grant.
Superintendent Kemp, sorry. Are you finished?
Yep.
Yep.
So thinking about the governance question, right? Yeah, I think what I'm, what I'm, what I'm thinking about is just making sure that I have clarity of direction from the board. And what I, what I'm listening for is kind of for the, the center of the conversation. We want to balance being financially responsible with, with consideration of how we're investing in renewable energies because that both are important for the district. We want to make sure that we're not saying no to solar. We're saying, let's figure out how we can move, continue to move forward and move forward in a way that makes sense for the district financially, resource wise and personnel wise, given our, our current, current situation. And that you want us to continue to deeply engage the students and teachers and other community members that are interested in this so that they understand where we're going and why, and so that we'll be set up better next time. Is there anything else that, that I, that I, and that we're lobbying for better funding?
I guess the one thing I would say is I would throw out the solar trees versus the solar panels because just some of the background stuff I did on it, you know, O'Clare installed their first solar tree this fall. So, you know, we have some examples of close by. So I mean, I, I think we want to not, not just throw up one. And I know there was a lot of work with that proposal and, and why they even came up with the solar trees versus going down the path of solar panels. So I guess I would just add to that discussion is don't throw out one altogether.
Further consider the solar trees, but make sure that if, if we're moving forward in that direction, that it is, that there's, that there's reasonable return on investment. But the return of investment is not just the finance. It's also what's the learning opportunity? What's the environmental responsibility? And how, how does it all factor in together?
Going back to trying to stay in governance, which, which I know maybe contacting Peter this afternoon might have been a, a little bit out of governance. I don't know. I, I just was interested in when I clicked on this letter, really what, what, what was? I, I was more interested about what, what is the future? Are there, are more opportunities? And it looks like there are, but I, now I'm, I'm unclear about, about any, any work on our staff's part in the next two weeks to two months on trees. No, I mean, we're not, I don't think we want to do that, right?
I think, I think we could, we could review it a little bit more.
Well, I thought that's what you were saying.
But I'm just kind of hearing that it's maybe not, I, I think we, we owe it to ourselves. We owe it to ourselves to take, take a little, little more look into it and also see how would it maybe either apply to our current next steps. But, but I don't, I don't hear solid support from at least trying to listen to the Senator that, that we should take it out of the general fund to do that, that we should really continue to book, focus on advocacy and lobbying as our first main efforts. And I think what, what was said as well, member Loffler Kemp, about making sure everybody understands what our platform is. Because the people who are saying the district should do something about solar, those are probably going to be the loudest voices that can help us get what we need to, to move forward to. So I think that's important.
Is our legislative platform an ask just for our district? Or is it an ask for them to keep, keep, keep this, keep what I found from this, you know, my connection with Peter, that the legislative is already putting 8 million towards it? So are we, are we as a district saying, we, we, we are right behind you? If Governor Walz, if, if the, or whoever is sponsoring the legislative plan for 8 million, we support that? Or are we saying we want to get more solar money here and there?
I think what we're saying is, it could, because it's a dialogue in the, the House and Senate and with the governor, and they're trying to figure, they're saying, we want to put more money towards solar. But then actually during our, our lobbying sessions, and we'll probably see it tomorrow, people are asking us like, what makes sense? Like you're the practitioners, what makes sense to you? And so if we have opportunity to say that, that funding in these different ways where we could maybe, maybe more fully fund our school projects, that, that would be something that would benefit us and others.
Yeah, and, and just to clarify, Chair Loffler, I, I wasn't with the trees. All I wanted to say with the trees is that to, to not just say that's not an option down the road. I'm not saying to pursue it right now. Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, could you use, you know?
You know, I'm just, because there might be some advantages. I don't know, you know? And I think we need to explore that, but not in the next three weeks. I think that can also be part of the conversation with some of the environmental groups that are very actively working on this solar in the schools. And I, like, I'm on a number of action alerts from different groups because of my past work. So it's not just school districts who are saying, you know, we need more funding. Like our legislative platform says, there's a lot of environmental groups that we can also be reaching out to if we, we're associated and saying, this is our experience with that grant that I know you're lobbying for and it's on your platform. We need more money to do it well for a school district our size. So there's kind of different ways that we can approach what our platform says.
And reaching out to people who formerly have done lobbying and had successful lobbying efforts to see what worked and what didn't. Not to engage our audience, but that, that would be something that, that would help us as well.
As a former teacher, former science teacher, I think it's unfortunate that, you know, they're putting this curriculum component up front.
I know.
With this whole grant application bit because, you know, once you get something started, whether it's trees or whether it's solar panels or, you know, again, we want to do it right. But, you know, you got great teachers, staff, curriculum development people that can help build that once, once it's in-house. And, and certainly, you know, students that have really worked hard to research this and understanding, you know, I mean, this certainly could be part of.
I agree, I agree, I agree. Yeah, and you know, in my communication with Peter this afternoon, it was like, we hope this isn't too onerous. And I think I'm going to respond back and say, I think, at least for a district like us right now that has a lot of other things and we're coming out of COVID and we have lots of issues in our schools, that this grant, this letter of intent grant process is, is onerous for us. And we've got a lot of staff and a lot of opportunity to get it done, but it's onerous.
And since the, the conversation has become with board and board members, maybe if we can think about how do we want to, think about those next steps of, of closing the loop with, with those. Because they, there was enthusiastic. Everybody, when they got the email, said, we will join you, we will help you, we will help lift this together. And so I think to just not respond or to say, sorry, we're not going to do it, that, that's not enough of a response, I think. Thinking about how can we maybe set up a virtual meeting or an in-person little forum and have some conversations about what, what this will look like as we move forward so that people understand that this is a priority for us and it's not, it's not just kicking the can right now. It's, it's, it's vital for us and it'll, it'll help us be ready for next time. Sounds like next time is just a less than a year away?
Thank you.
Thanks guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mel. We do have one other additional item.
And this is a perfect example of, you know, what's, what's the next agenda? And I, I would even waive it after, you know, I don't think, it'll, it's, it's kind of, between Assistant Superintendent Bonds and myself, just kind of our, kind of check-in with committee of the whole topics, agendas, what do we want to see? How do we want to see it? I think between Assistant Superintendent and his administrative assistant, which is still Kayla, I think, right now, kind of playing devil's, which we thank you a lot, have been really, really focused on the needs of what, what needs to come at a committee of the whole meeting. But then there's always a month here or an opportunity there that, you know, I can remember when we went to a committee of the whole meeting, member Loffler Kemp saying, you know, when we don't need to have a meeting, we, we just don't have to create one. And, and, and I, that's always kind of stuck in the back of my mind when we've come to agendas. But I, I just wanted to give an opportunity for board members to say, any ideas that you might think about our committee of the whole structure or about what you like, don't like, or just the whole idea of are there, are there things you could tell Assistant Superintendent Bonds that you would like to see or not see? I'll let you rescue me here.
Okay. Um, I think, and, and I've shared this, this perspective with administrators that we all fully lack, um, talk about student achievement and, and how, how that is the focus of what we do and needs to be. And so my thought on the committee of the whole is that we could have a recurring monthly, monthly, you know, um, student achievement area of focus, focus area of the month kind of thing. And it's something like, if that's the only thing on the agenda, it doesn't have to happen. You know, things like that. But, you know, I mean, we can go over, go over data, we can go over programs, we can go over best practices, we can go over new ideas. We get, you know, you can dissect, you know, when you're making tough decisions on how to, and, and why, you know, those, those kinds of things. I think it would give us a better understanding of, of MTSS in, in a lot of ways because that's, that's what we're banking on student achievement with. But also, you know, highlighting the needs for extracurricular clubs and the equity of it all and, you know, balancing, you know, east, west, north, south, all those kinds of things. Um, I think, you know, spending 20 minutes in a meeting a month, knowing that we're directly talking about student achievement and how our students are achieving in a breadth of ways, not just on MCAs, but, you know, in successes, I think would, would definitely help us be able to grasp the complexity of what we're doing. I'm, I'm not sure that, you know, us board members, I'll think, you know, about our roles very, very much, um, in that, in the, in that frame of, you know, we are, what we do, it directly affects student achievement too. And we're part of that process. So I don't know how you feel about that, but it's, it's, it's just an idea. You take it, take it or take it or leave it.
I appreciate that.
But that's, you know, refine it how you like it, if you like it or not. But, um, that's, that's what I would love to see is some, some concerted direct talk about achievement.
That, that, that one is a, an easy one. That's an easy, doable one because there are so many different programs that we offer. There can be program highlights, even the one that was given today, right? There's, there's a variety of data that goes along with that. We have, we are engaged in a lot of work in, in teacher learning equity. It's focused on student achievement and then it uses data. And providing an update would be pretty easy. As a matter of fact, the history is of the committee, it was the educational committee. Right? And then it's probably, and it now has morphed into, I guess now, what, what we are calling the CAL now, that focuses on educational topics, teacher learning, equity, and now other operational items as well, such as solar panel discussions where it allows the board, the full board, in order to engage us in a really deep dialogue around certain topics or, um, for just issues in, in, in a way that doesn't allow for action, but allows for discussion. So, so it can, it can be done.
Yeah, I, and just to follow up, you know, I, like my question about elementary school counselors, you can take 15 minutes to, to go in the pros and cons and, and what it would take and, you know, those kinds of things, like what, what do elementary counselors bring to the table? And all that kind of stuff, just to inform us, even if we're not going to do that or, you know, to help us get educated, I just kind of like in our own professional development kind of way so that we are better engaged to support or, or question any of the decisions you can forward.
And it's going to be really easy to do, you know, come over to with our member Loffler Kemp because we're finishing up our strategic planning process. And there are so many action plans that will come out of that or different plans that will come out of that, that there will be ample opportunities to provide snippets of insights on what those plans are looking into and the goals we have in those plans and the work we're doing.
And, and that was my other suggestion was, is more board professional development, opportunities to learn about what, you know, what's happening in the district at that time. But this is the only time a month that we're, we get together to, to talk as a whole group. I mean, that's, it's, it's important that we make it productive and, and that we learn something from it.
Member Loffler Kemp, then Superintendent Magus.
Yeah, I, I agree with what member Oswald's saying. But I, I also have really appreciated, and I know it's taken a lot of your timing and, uh, to, to set up different staff coming in, just like, you know, these counselors coming in today. That was very informative. It was great to put names and faces with folks, especially some of the new staff that have came into the district through COVID and that. And so I, I, I've appreciated the committee of the whole being a discussion time as, as was suggested by member Oswald. But also I've appreciated kind of the education piece of getting to know our staff and having them have an opportunity to get to know us and see the kinds of things we're interested in and, and thinking about as we're doing a budget and, and things like that. So I know it's a lot of work to get groups of people come in, but you've been really right on with many of the topics that you've brought in and the, the groups of, of staff that you've brought in to present. So really appreciate that and I feel like I've learned a lot this year, so.
Thank you. Superintendent Magus.
Grateful as well and to kind of, more of some of these conversations. I think putting together a regular calendar of progress monitoring reports based on the different areas of the strategic plan so that we're not, I thi- I think having some things somewhat randomized. So we're hearing about different things that are going on in the district and it's not just about the strategic plan. But making sure that we, each of the components that we have, whether, if, you know, if we're, if we're looking at like, what are we doing about recruiting and retaining? For instance, having a report on that. If we're looking at different elements within the MTSS system as far as what are we doing about literacy and our, our achievement in literacy? If we have a set calendar, when you, when you know when different things are going to come forward and that we can bring staff to come report on it and have different levels, that will help us hold ourselves accountable as, as district administrators because, you know, what we, what we observe gets done. And I think that, that, that's helpful and it also helps us when we're making tough decisions. That nothing that's proposed to do is a bad idea or bad for kids. Every, like, the, all of this would be good, but we can't say yes to everything. So if we're reporting on and staying tight to our strategic plan and looking at like, what are those focus areas on a periodic basis? That's not the only thing we do. But we do need to hold ourselves to looking at those things so that, that we, we don't feel like we're kicking the can or ignoring things.
Well, that, that was good.
Thank you.
Just, you know, again, I think it's, it's right to, you know, we, it isn't, it is probably still our education committee meeting in a way. Except for because we were meeting in committee and there were only three people assigned and that was all, then we, you know, that's all that could attend. I mean, this is the right thing to call a committee of the whole when a lot of it is really educational, you know, and, and maybe we can focus more on hearing achievement and stuff like that. And then, you know, once the strategic plan is done, those four quarterly work sessions could also then take the place of, like it could, you know, the next work session could be, but I think it's strategic plan, could have been an update on solar or it could have been an update on some other depth issue too. Because I, I don't know, I'm, I'm interested in keeping, I think we did keep, did, did we keep the four quarterly work sessions in the 23 calendar?
I believe so.
So we have one February 13th and then I think we have one somewhere in early, late spring and then maybe late fall and then winter-ish? So.
Yes. Number seven. Future topics for CAL. I mean, is this something that maybe we could all, you know, spend some time, you know, contemplating as we're either driving to the city or whatever?
Yes, exactly. Yes. Yes.
And, and then feed these to the two of you?
Exactly. That's kind of what I was telling you is that I would just say it's kind of like what we used to do for school board meetings is board members would, would think of things and, and then sometimes it, it won't necessarily get on, on the next CAL. But it maybe Assistant Superintendent Bonds says, well, you know, in three months, we're going to discuss that anyway because it needs to be discussed because it's on a state statute rotation or something like that. But yeah, I think we're just interested.
I do think what member Oswald brought up is very important. But, but I think we could all think of things and, you know, maybe, maybe keep a short list to.
Yep, yep. Just wanted to highlight that again.
To close out.
And, and I think that we are constantly asked about principals being able to come talk to us, too.
Yep, yep.
So, you know, that, maybe we, we have them on, on an actual schedule, you know, of, you know, high school principals come talk to us, you know.
But we also know they're really busy.
And then like maybe break the, break the elementary into two and, and then there's quarterly, you know, and they always know like, March is my month or, you know, whatever it is.
I know, yeah.
Those are, but those are kind of important conversations that we have missed.
They are. Thank you. Thank you for all the ideas and they will be considered. And, and we will continue, Chair Loffler and Iself will continue to work on those things as we do the agenda setting. Chair Loffler, that concludes our meeting.
Thank you. We don't need to.
Thank you.